Most of the time, so. Yeah, glad you could be here. You got three forms?
Bob Danforth should be here at some point.
Okay, three forms.
We have enough to get you guys.
And you got a Mylar? Roulette?
Yes.
Yeah, just set it down there. And then just point out the schematic. We'll get it on the record. Have you, Rebecca, have you seen there?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Is Bill coming in for that filing, he said?
I'm sorry.
For Dulu, they coming in?
Oh, yes, yes, they're here. They're in the back hall right now.
Okay, so it's just a filing?
Yes, it's just a definitive filing.
Have you seen the preliminary stuff on that?
Uh, well, the, yes, I have.
Okay. So it's just acceptance of the file and signing. Okay, good.
The same as the preliminary, the final preliminary?
Uh, so they-
With the two?
Yep. So they've changed it, so it's not really the same, but.
Was it still three lots, or is it?
It, well, before it was four lots, because remember there was two, the two.
Right.
Now it's three.
Now they're only doing three, but they're not constructing the other roadway.
Right.
It's changed substantially from what it was before, but.
As long as we don't have two entrances, that's fine. I mean, we figured that.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be based upon what they're proposing.
Yeah, it's down a lot, so. It sounds like they're working. And what about conservation? They in the loop on that?
Uh, they, they, I mean, I know that Mike had been working with them. I'm not too sure if they've decided on that, that piece of property, however.
Okay, well, we're just gonna, it's just an acceptance today, anyway. But good to know, everybody's working with everybody. Because we're going on the clock here, so.
We've got like 10 seconds.
We need that, like, round clock thing that counts. It's down, you know, seven, six, five. We live? We live? Yeah, okay, let's go. So need a motion to welcome to the Groveland Planning Board meeting of March 26, 2019. Need a motion to open the meeting, please.
Still motion?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. Show the meeting open at 19:30 hours. Okay, first up, we have on the agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes for March 5th, and a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, that's written.
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. Showed approved. Okay, next step, we have, let's see, Jeffrey Hoffman, Millennium Engineering, on behalf of William Daley, on A and R application here for donation of some land to Fisheries and Wildlife. So just want to point that out for the cameras and what we're doing.
Also, we're looking to do some lot line.
A lot line?
For the, this currently eight possesses lots of record.
Okay.
That, you know.
This'll clean them up.
And what we're proposing is to make two.
Okay.
One will be parcel A.
Yeah.
Which is the red line south. That's gonna get conveyed to Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
And then the remainder, proposed parcel B, will be the combination of what's left of what they all.
Okay, so lot line adjustment, and then parcel A over to Fisheries and Wildlife?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
How big is parcel A?
Parcel A is 10.79, 10.8 acres, and they will be retaining 16.8.
Okay.
Good, okay. And you have the A and R paperwork and forms?
There's seven copies of the plan stamped and signed. There's three copies of the Form A, and Form A 1, 2, if you need it.
Okay.
You want also.
Showing that. So first off, typically, there's a fee with this, but since this land is going to Fisheries and Wildlife, would actually benefit the town, likes someone to make a motion if they feel so fit to waive the fee.
Still motion?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. And then any questions on the Form AA1s for this? A motion to fly, to accept, and endorse the Mylar?
Motion to accept and endorse.
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. I'll endorse the forms. Okay, if you guys want to get working on the, on the Mylar. It's right over here.
No, but the-
Oh, the pen. There you go. Take that pen, and I'll use this pen. Okay, so it's three, two, six. Endorsed, okay. Okay, these go to the, who brings these to the clerk, Rebecca? Are you now, or the applicant?
Eddie.
Okay, so we'll get these over here. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, on the Form A1, is all this data on there? And did you want it to form A1 informed, because you kind of included it onto the plan?
I'm sorry, I'm not-
On the Form A1, you, you combined all the parcels, but aren't they combined on the plan?
They're combined on the plan.
Yeah, so pleasure the board. We can endorse the Form A1 as well, but it's all indicated on the plan?
We'll just endorse it.
Okay.
I'm stating on the Form A that it's a lot line.
That it's the same.
Yeah. And for the folks at home watching, what this was is that the parcel, 11 acres approximately, is gonna be given over to the state Fisheries and Wildlife, not to be built upon and merged with other parcels of the Commonwealth, and that's a, a good thing for the town of Groveland, to, which is why we waive the fee going forward on that, so. Okay, I believe you are set, gentlemen. Is your Mylar, that's completed?
Okay.
The forms we've got?
And I'll timestamp them.
You got it? And that's that. We'll take the copies. Thank you for coming in. We'll see you on the next. Yeah, don't forget that one. And electronic, and the electronic file? Yeah, you've already sent that, with the endorsement on it? Once it's endorsed.
Yes, I will forward that to her tomorrow.
Okay, and the seven copies with the, with the stamp on is what we're going through. So at the registry, you gotta get those.
I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not showing, let's see, we don't have any invoices on there. Next up, we get Salem Street, application. So it's a definitive submittal?
Yeah.
Okay. Fees, checks, papers.
Looks like a large stack of papers.
Rebecca said she'd see this here. Thanks for working with us. Mike is okay on this? Mike, conservation, have you talked to him lately on that? Have you talked to Mike? Okay.
It's the next one.
You can just, so it's pretty standard submittals, so.
Yeah.
Just see the submittal forms, and then, thank you. And then just, just throw up on one sheet, just so we can see it all, what, what the final, you know, cartoon looked like, just to see how that all blended out there. Okay, so Billy, just want to point that through, where you are.
There's one, two, and lots coming out there for access. This is, we both think that they're not gonna build.
Okay. So either driveway?
Yep, this is gonna be a driveway, not a driveway.
So it's just three lots?
Yes.
Okay. And did that work out where you guys came in with the other A and Rs before, or that, once you danced around with them?
Well, we still have a little more, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but.
The music hasn't stopped.
But that's all right. Okay. So Rebecca, any questions on the submittal?
Did you get the, a butter list? I put them right under the plans. Oh, okay.
So need a motion to endorse the Form C for submittal definitive, and what are you calling this?
Oakland Terrace.
Oakland Terrace.
Still motion?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. We'll show the forms endorsed.
If you need more, I guess, I get six and six, if you lose the six full times.
Is there another one I can sign here?
Need a third one.
Yeah, um, wait, I gotta get C1, too. Hang on one second. Yeah, Bob, do you have the other one there?
Do you have a third one? Not mine yet.
Two, I can get you one more.
Yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, sign me C1.
Is that one for one more?
Yeah, it's, well, it's the C and C1.
Oh, I have.
Yeah. It's probably just sitting in the packet, so. We can, you know, copy this one, and it's just a C1.
Yeah, but I think we only send the one, right? We just send the one.
Yeah, that's right. It's just this, if not, we'll just make a copy. Does Bobby have it in front of him, or is that something different?
That's the packet.
Okay.
This one. We'll make a copy.
Rebecca, can we get a, a copy later for the submittal?
Right now?
No, no, you can do it later, just, we signed them both, just so we have three for you to stamp tomorrow.
Nothing, it's just, everything goes first.
Yeah, onto that, and we're receiving the set of plans. And for the folks at home, you know, with this over here was, was a four-lot subdivision, which they redesigned to cut it down to a three, and also eliminate a road and all that. So that's all set, so we'll just kind of get you on the hearing for the next, so advertise it and go. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Who's up next? Let's see, 180 Center Street, decision. Unless they waive it. Who's, who's here for 180? Okay, just about everybody. So Bob's not here, does, would the applicant waive the three, the three is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, all right, for that, so we have the decision, which is.
But we first need to vote on a couple of waivers in your packet. You'll find a submit, a submission from the applicant's attorney suggesting waivers from certain parking requirements, 9.31 and 9.3.6.
Yeah.
And then also, before we close the public hearing, the applicant has made her to reduce the bond amount that the peer review engineer had set. So I don't know if the board would want to entertain further discussion before closing and reviewing the decision.
Okay, so first a motion to open a continued hearing?
Still motion?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the hearing opened and continued 19:40 hours. Okay, so votes on two, two waivers, as noted here, Section 9.31, dimensional, and Section 9.36, 10-foot minimum buffer. On that, flavor of the board, motions to.
Motion to grant the waivers.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show both waivers granted and approved. Any other business before?
We'll talk about the bond.
Yeah.
Bond. You want to get that, okay, what do we have for?
Yep, Peter Olson, TEC, the bond that I estimated was $280,000, including a 20% contingency and 3% renovation. If you look at my estimate, the majority of that is loan and seed costs, actually, just to stabilize the site. What I looked at is the area of the site that will be disturbed by the project, getting on the seed, four inches of loan, seeding, using mass GSE standard bid prices. In this case, we are converting a portion of the site from forested area to what would be grass in that situation, so you're gonna want to get some stormwater E and P's in place. So I have $75,000 for that, and then some additional cost for wetland replication and erosion control.
And one thing to note with that is that we had initial conversations with the Conservation Commission, and through their order of conditions, they will also be imposing a bond for this particular project. They have allocated $20,000, and that's what we had asked TEC to take into consideration, so to make it easier on the applicant, collect one bond for this project, instead of two separate bonds, so that it would just be more accommodating. And the applicant, during initial conversations, stated that they would be amenable to that.
Okay, so we have a 380 recommendation from TEC that includes the conservation?
But the $20,000 is essentially non-touchable, because that's conservation.
So our bond would be 360.
So.
No, our bond would be 360. We collect 380, but 20 of it would be over to conservation.
Got it, okay. And what does the applicant recommend?
I had a couple of questions on your, on your estimates. With the $154,000, we're not taking any move off-site, and Mr. Kelly here is, Mr. Kelly here is, is gonna be doing our project and correcting our law, Larry, but we're bringing in 200 truckloads of structure fill. So all the loom's gonna get stripped off, and the structure fill's gonna be, so looms that we're gonna leave the site, so I don't know why we need bond to cover the loom.
Okay.
Secondly, you've got erosion control, $10,000. That's the absolute first thing we're gonna do. Conservation has asked that we, if we try and get the erosion up before April 15th, because of the turtle migration, and we're, we're planning to do that, so in a few weeks, we'll have the erosion control up, you can come out and look at it, and I don't, I don't know why we need to put a bond up for that, because it'll be completed.
So you guys are recommending what? Just looking at them.
164, less than 380.
That's a bunch. TEC, what do you got? Yeah, hang on a second, Larry, I know.
The erosion control number is something that I would recommend the board carries, just for the duration of the project, essentially. I know the applicant, first step is to get the erosion control placed, but over the time of stabilization, there may be some replacements that's needed.
Okay.
As far as the loan goes.
Yeah.
It's hard to estimate how much is out there.
Okay, let's see if Larry can speak on that. I, I bet.
We're not gonna be able to use all the loan we're gonna have.
Yeah. So Larry, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, now you're gonna get the real old guy to part with the guy. So anyways, this isn't prevailing weight job. It's totally private.
Yeah.
Okay. None of this is ever gonna be accepted by the town, okay? It's a total private job.
Yes.
Owned by Tom and Christian, okay? So I'm surprised, I'm confused a little bit about the bonding, because.
That's just standard protocol, but what, what do you think is out there for loom?
So listen, the back portion is 3.14 acres.
Yeah.
There's approximately six inches to eight inches of loom.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing's gonna leave the site.
Right.
There's an excess of loom after I do the roadway, okay? The whole price, and it'll be honest, the whole price, other than some little finish work around the bond and some sprinkler systems, is $350,000. That includes tree cutting, land clearing, structural material, common fill, the roadway, the box called it, the stone walls.
Yeah.
So I don't know how we can come up with that number.
So what's your number?
Well, I agree with Tom, or just some reasonable number. Wally.
Yeah.
30 days, there's gonna be no occupancy permit, no one's gonna move in. 30 days after I start, 70% of the work's gonna be done.
Yeah, I know, I don't disagree with, with what you're saying. We're just trying to come up with a number for the paperwork here to go, go forward, so.
So we're gonna strip, we're gonna strip, we're gonna stockpile loom, stabilize, erosion control, do earthmoving, and at the right time, very carefully, construct an access road, a box called it, right? So that, you know, something reasonable.
So you're looking at 250 to 300, is that reasonable, out of 380?
But why bond, why bond everything upfront, like earthmoving and stockpiling loom? I, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, special permit. So are you following?
I am following. If the loom is in place, that unit price, I think, would, would be probably reallocated, considered earthwork.
Yeah.
Because you want to protect yourself. They strip the entire site, something happens, they walk away. That's, that's.
Yeah, I've not worked too much with him on the job on that one, but we know where to find him. So, so.
If they walk away, Tom owns the site. I mean, this isn't being accepted by the town.
But it's the aquifer protection district as well. So this is our drinking water and our well water, so there has to be some, some sensitivity to that as well.
Right. So what do you, what do you think? Can we?
I mean, I would say probably $5 a yard for earthwork to spread the existing loom that's out there to act in place.
Okay, so give me a number out of the 360 here, or 380 even, 360 here, so what, what are we looking at?
I mean, that would cut the, that would cut the loan cost down to like $15,000, be a scale like that.
So that's kind of what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, so you've cut it by 140.
So.
You're at 240.
So, okay, so 240, is that a number you agree with? Does the board agree with that? Rebecca, you following?
Is, yeah, I'm following, as long as the $20,000 is incorporated still through the conservation.
So is that still in there if we do 240? Okay, Bob?
I don't know, we've never been this high on anything.
No, I mean, we're going down, so, yeah.
Nichols Village, I don't think anything.
Yeah, we care about.
Yeah, we do, but anyway, so, besides, and this stuff gets released as you guys get it done, anyway, it'll be done in lickety-split, I'm sure. So I just need a 240. Is 240 a good number to reduce it to?
150 is more than sufficient.
Looking for an agreement in the middle here somewhere.
I want it, I want it to go lower.
So pick a number?
Pick a number 175.
TEC. Since you work for the town, does that come in there? Want to round up to 200, we'll call it even? Is that good for everybody? Brings it down 180? I'm just trying to go somewhere in the middle here, we're this fast. Okay, 200? That'll help with Concom, too. Does that work?
Yeah.
Where's Bob go?
I don't know.
Oh. Don't leave the building, we need a loan. Is it too good?
Yeah, I want a last, but.
Okay. So, so motion, need a motion to reduce the bond to 200?
Still motion?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we get a bond reduction down to 200, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the decision, board members?
No.
Straightforward.
Wally, can I just ask this question?
Yeah.
I'm gonna do it. I want the planning board with Dempsey on the Concom and the Concom agent. How are you gonna release the money? When I immediately.
What are we putting up? That's what the question is gonna be. Is this a cash bond? Letter of credit, so they come in, once the stuff is done, we get, Rebecca goes, inspects it, boom, line by line.
Can we submit and Tom and I, so it can be reduced?
Yeah.
100%, being at the board would allow that.
Yeah, yeah, we do that all the time. If it's a cash bond, you guys usually, I mean, you've done it yourself. You come in and, right after it's done.
You know, I'm not always on a job that gets accepted. And by the way, thank you for the 1,600 bucks. I built that road 30 years ago.
We were trying to give it back, trust me, trust me. It's been a while.
You're the one that started from building the town.
Nah!
But anyways.
Yeah, schedule values is fine.
Okay.
Because.
So you front load, you front load your earthwork number, and it gets released when you're done?
Okay.
You're all right, thank you.
Good. Okay, so we've got that done, so now we need a motion to close the hearing and then vote.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous, show the hearing, public hearing closed for 180 Center Street. We have a decision before us. We've been through this over here, we need a motion to approve and endorse.
Before you did that, may I ask one question about the decision? I've read the draft decision, and under the special conditions, subparagraph two, requires a parking study after one year of occupancy to ensure adequate parking. It's a little vague, and it's hard to understand why. I would respectfully suggest that, under the circumstances, because of the nature of the facility, and the fact that the parking requirement actually exceeds the parking requirement for equestrian facilities in other similar situations, that it's going to be more than adequate, and there, as you know, there's, there's other space available need there. So I would respectfully suggest that that condition really isn't necessary. If you determine that it absolutely is necessary, then I would qualify the first sentence by saying that the study would be to satisfy, to determine that we're satisfying the average daily requirements for the facility.
The, if I may speak on that just for, just for a moment, because I'm around Barnes a lot. The parking is, you know, some days it's gonna be out, depends on how many people are coming in for lessons, and some days there's nobody there, okay? And then most people have trucks, and if they, they need to park somewhere. But the question is to, back to Rebecca, when we have this in here, what's, is that just a, just a snapshot?
The reason for it was because essentially, per our Groveland zoning bylaw, and our parking requirements, we don't have anything that satisfies the use that's being proposed, but we do have a section in our bylaw that states that the planning board can make up a number that they think is suitable for that particular use. So the applicant had requested, I believe it was 21 parking spaces, and said that was sufficient based upon the amount of people that would be visiting the site, for the students there, the teachers there, et cetera. However, there was some concern, because while those spaces may be okay for their daily operation, with the narrative that they had provided, and the ultimate use for maybe more events and fundraiser-type activities, that the parking would not be sufficient for those types of events. They had stated that they would be, because they're opening up some stalls, that they have the horses, that they move them, there'd be additional parking, but in order to verify, there was some concern.
So we want a snapshot to take a look at one of the events, basically?
Rebecca, how would you logically, you have to have somebody there all the time.
No, I've been there, right, it's, it's not a, I don't think so.
I don't know how you can actually, you know, capture all that data.
Well, here's just a logistics issue. So the parking area, because I don't have the plan in front of me right now, is that bituminous, or it's just gonna be gravel?
It's just the gravel.
Okay. There's gonna be a, an over, over area for trailers, park, stuff like that, so that could be used at some point in time?
And you can park along the road.
So how about if we, if we modify the language to say, just a, just a site visit at some point, and then discuss with the parties if something needs to be done, is that?
We could do something to the, to the, until it becomes an issue, or until, until there's, there's not enough parking on site.
I mean, you have events.
I understand that the last thing that the owners want is a problem with the operation, because they're the ones.
No, I get it. I, I, no, but he's got an overrun situ, over there, I'm familiar with the events, I know what he's talking about, onto that. But, yeah, we can just go with that until, how do we strike that, or mod that language? Need basis only?
I'd want to think about it a little bit more, but, because I wouldn't want it to be something that, one, you couldn't enforce, or two, doesn't have any bearing on the nature why I have it at all, so I, I'd want to think about, I mean.
How about a by-need basis? It's only for one time for one year, right? Is that what you're looking at?
It was just a general condition to have somebody out there, an engineer, to verify that the parking wasn't an issue. Not every single day, not every single event, just a year after occupancy, just confirm that everything's still in go. But if we want to just.
Can we leave that at the board's discretion? Is that for inspection?
Well, we could say that if.
In one use period of time, the board shall make an inspection and make a determination?
Yes, you can put it on the board if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, so.
That's better than having us.
I, I get it. So, so, yeah, so that's fine. Okay, so we'll modify, so need a motion to approve as language modified under that section?
We also need to amend the guaranteed bond to 200,000.
And reduce bond accordingly in the same motion? Okay. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor of second, may I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. Show the decision approved. Do we have the signature sheet on this? No.
It has the one on the front page, which I can print for signature afterwards.
Okay. Oh, I see. I got it. Is this the only one here, or do you have a copy, too?
No, I'll have to, I have to reprint it, because it has the, who made the motion, who seconded the motion, and I also need to remove one of the board members' names on the line, because they're not here.
Got it.
Then I can timestamp it tomorrow, but I'll print it out before one of you leaves to have you sign it, and give it to the applicant tomorrow when the town clerk office is open.
Okay.
I will bring it to the, the 20-day appeals period starts tomorrow, when it's timestamped by the clerk.
Everybody's here, right, for this? Does anybody have any issues with it? And you should be good to go, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay?
Thank you very much.
We don't have to, she has to print the revised.
Send that down, just sign that, yeah. Okay, what else we got?
I haven't met her in a week.
Lisa, nice to meet you.
He's not an evil guy. He's, he's actually.
Are you a county engineer in Beverly or something?
I work for the city of Beverly, but I'm not.
I go back to La Micella and Dick McNeil.
Yeah, yeah.
I built quite a few homes in my late 20s.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is. Oh, Dr. Turk in Beverly. Everyone does everything in Beverly.
He's the one that saved Matthew Drive.
George M. Morris, yeah. He showed up the other day. Yeah.
Okay, guys, we need a motion, need to sign the motion, Mylar, please, thank you.
Yes, he showed up the other day and started going, "Don't you know who I am?" And I said, "No, I don't." I can't reach her from here without shoving it, throwing it at her. You're, you're easy.
I just want to reprint that page.
We got a full set to sign here, or just the Mylar and one?
Uh, just one full set and the Mylar.
Will you be in the front? She will hunt you down.
You've read across the street, too.
Yeah, yes, it's not particularly hard to find you. Sweet, are we actually, like, done? Short of signings?
Um, we're just gonna, yeah, this...
I saw he showed up, but he just walked out, so I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I don't.
And then, what's this lot release?
So we have the one, uh, there's two other items.
Okay.
Yeah, that one we could do.
Ooh, pretty colored ones.
I love to come when they throw color on them, you know who used to do that?
Well, you're signing that, I'm gonna go and print out that first page of the decision.
Okay.
Are they on my phone? Oh, no, they're ringing the plan.
The covers, mother.
It's gonna go a full set.
'Cause you don't generally need to record landscape plans and everything else.
This is where you wish you had a stamp.
You're not allowed to do that.
All right.
The right.
Nothing exceeding that.
No, I don't have one. The same way that wasn't filled out electronically.
Yeah, in the same spot.
Yeah, in the exact same spot, with the exact same hesitation, right? It's never happened. Did Bob answer you?
What?
Did Bob answer you?
No.
What? Oh.
Well, he said he was coming, the, the only thing that makes me nervous is he said he was coming.
He usually beats me down for...
No, he just said he's on his way.
Thanks, Bob. Tell him if he waits five minutes, he doesn't need to come.
Yeah.
Actually, at this point, he doesn't need to come.
Yeah, okay. Wow.
It's like buying a house all over again.
Thanks, put it in front of that. Yeah, of course. Yeah, the, um, the way that goes, I know what, you know, I'm looking at Larry, but I don't, sorry, he's kind of, a lot of work in the town, he's good, we hold him, we hold him to the fire, but he's good. And, um, I'm not worried about that, so thanks for working. Yeah, of course. Um, I assume generally the way it works is, I come up with a number, and then they try to get it, well...
That's, that's it, that's kinda, that's how I was, I was looking to get it in the middle, because I, you know, um, you know, we gotta have something down, but I, I want, I don't want it way out, but I don't want it way under, 'cause I've, I've seen that before, too, so, not on my watch, so, um, on that.
Oh, wait a minute, you got a comrade, too. Wow. He's coming.
Oh, is he?
He should, he's told, it's that one, he's gonna show up for, like, the, we adjourn, and then...
Yeah, but let him sign the, um...
Oh, he can't even vote.
The lot release?
Yeah, the one...
Oh, he could, he could do the lot release.
Yeah.
And he could sign the lot.
Yeah, you don't, you know what those are, we used to do them all the time, where, where we had a steady motion, the, the attorney brings it, and we sign them.
Sign this, too.
He didn't vote.
He didn't vote, he can't sign those.
Unless they approved it out there, but...
I'll have it, I'll have this.
Yeah, we can do a recall and vote, but I don't think it matters.
No.
It's only one signature on it.
Special permit, you can...
That's why we told them if they waived it, they waived it.
If they waived it, then they're fine.
You sure?
Yeah, that's why I asked them before we started. Only they can waive it, we can't.
Do you think they can do that? I don't, I guess, I don't think so.
Yeah, we've done it before, the, only they have to be the ones, we, they have to agree with it, onto that, so, um, so it's re-signed out, if you want, we can get that other thing going, for the two lots. I know, you're gonna be there a while. So there's that, and then for the two lots, we can brief and vote.